You know I've traveled near and far to see the shining sea. I've seen a lot of places and people that are nice to me. One place that's in my heart and this is how I feel. I'm talking about my hometown Fayetteville. She's nestled in the sand hills on a river called Cake Field. Special to so many who proudly served our country here. She was named for Lafayette and known for cotton mills. I'm talking about my hometown Fayetteville. My hometown Fayetteville. I'm so proud to be from here. It don't take long when you're away from home to find out how you feel. It's always good to come home to Fayetteville. Babe Ruth hit his first one. Heard around the world. Sherman marched for the Union and burned the arsenal. Old Market House still standing but stands for freedom's will. I'm talking about my hometown Fayetteville. My hometown Fayetteville. I'm so proud to be from here. It don't take long when you're away from home to find out how you feel. It's always good to come home to Fayetteville. My all-American city Fayetteville.
One of you to the Monday, February 13th, 2017 City Council regular meeting. I am not the mayor. The mayor's joining us by phone. My name is Mitch Colvin, Mayor Pro Tem. So I'll be running the meeting on-site tonight. We apologize for being a little behind schedule. We had a closed session discussion upstairs that ran over, but we are here now. So if we could ask, if we can get the chaplain, Mr. William McCoy, if you could come forth with the invocation? If we could all stand for the invocation and then following that, the pledge allegiance.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you, dear Lord, for the many blessings upon this community and upon us individually. Lord, we know in your scripture you tell us, "Government is ordained by you." We thank you for the government here. We pray, Lord, to lead and guide this evening in the presumption of business. We pray, Father, that you would guide again. And we thank you, Father, for those that are here. We thank you for our commissioned persons and bless them, Father, as they continue to lead this city. We pray, Lord, should be with those that's going to speak tonight. Thy blessed name we pray.
The Boy Scouts, you want to lead us in the pledge allegiance? You gentlemen want to come forth? Sorry about the last minute, gentlemen, but y'all always prepared, huh? All right. Good to see. Y'all lead us in the pledge allegiance?
Pledgeance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. What's your troop number? Thank you. Item 4.0 is the announcements and recognition. We're going to yield to the city manager, Mr. Hewitt.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem and members of council. I would ask Budget Director and Budget and Evaluation Director Tracy Brawls to come forward to share with you information about some of the capital project ordinances which we're going to be asking council to approve, which are directly related to our Hurricane Matthew recovery efforts.
Good evening, mayor, members of council. Just a brief update on where we stand so far with our appropriations related to Hurricane Matthew recovery. Up to this point, we've appropriated $1.8 million in our operating budgets. And tonight, we've brought you budget ordinance amendments totaling just over $3 million for additional expenditures in our operating budgets. Those are primarily debris removal costs, which are around $1.7 million. We've got about $1.5 million related to the repair and replacement of city vehicles that were damaged during the storm. And then we've got about $1.5 million for other miscellaneous expenditures that would include things like the fire and emergency response, the personnel costs, other damaged equipment, et cetera. We also have for you tonight the first of our capital project ordinances related to infrastructure and facility repairs for the damage. So we're at the point in the process of the estimates for those projects, and these are the projects ready to move forward. They include the restoration of Shawcroft Drive, Offing Drive, and North Cool Spring Street. And those three streets are expected to cost about $4.5 million. Then we also have an ordinance for you tonight for the restoration of our Alexander Street Maintenance Facility building. That's where our Traffic Services Division, our Street Maintenance Division are located. And that facility did sustain considerable flood damage. So that is about $300,000 that's estimated to bring that building back to function. So including the appropriations that we're requesting that you approve tonight, we're at about $9.6 million. We're expecting, we've been reviewing these expenditures as we go along with the consultant who's been assisting us with our FEMA administration and applications. We're expecting that FEMA will provide $6.9 million of that funding, that the state will match $2.3 million. And then we have some insurance on our Alexander Street building that would be about $150,000. And then our local fund balance from the general fund and the stormwater fund would make up about $325,000. So that's where we are at this point. We are, of course, the Engineering and Infrastructure Department is moving forward with completing their estimates and gathering information on eligibility for the remaining infrastructure repairs. One of the things that we're also recommending that City Council do is to, within our general fund fund balance, to keep about $1.5 million set aside because the FEMA regulations are very specific as to what is reimbursable and what is not. So what we've projected here are our best estimates based on our recommendations of likely reimbursements from our consultants. So should there be any issues with some of these expenditures not being reimbursable, we would have that fund balance to fall back on.
Council, we have any questions? Ms. Braw? Councilmember Chris?
Ms. Braw, let me just try to put this in layman language. We've had to spend some money upfront because of Matthew.
Yes, sir.
And that money has either come out of the general fund or out of the reserve. But since it was not programmed into the budget, that's why we have to do budget ordinance amendments. In other words, we're making changes to the budget so that we're legally allocating that money to be spent, correct?
Yes, sir.
Now, out of all that money that we've upfronted, we're anticipating, hopefully, getting $6.9 million back from FEMA and $2.3 million back from the state.
That's correct.
And some from the insurance. So the outlay, the money that we probably will not get back, what would that total be roughly?
Well, based on our projections here, we've got $325,000. That would be local funding. Now, this is going to require, of course, that the city has to expend our own resources until we get those reimbursements. So we'll have some cash flow issues that our finance officer is reviewing, and we expect to talk with you about that at the retreat on Friday.
I just want to make sure that our citizens understand that we're hopeful of getting reimbursed the majority of this money. But we've got to pay these bills upfront and keep it moving. Thank you so much.
Yes, sir. Any other questions, council? Ms. Brawls, thank you. Council, item 5.0 is the approval of the agenda. Can we entertain a motion to approve the agenda? Have a motion by Councilmember Wright? Is there a second? Second by Councilmember Hearst. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Madam Clerk, that's unanimous with the mayor's green from all councilmembers. Item 6.0 is the consent. A lot of the items, Ms. Brawls covered in explanation. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Move to approve the items in the consent agenda.
Second. That's the Councilmember Chris and McDougal motion for approval of the consent agenda. Any discussion on the motion? If none, council will ask for your votes. Mayor, Mr. Mayor?
Green.
Madam Clerk, that's unanimous. Item 7.0, reports from boards and commissions, the annual report from the Joint Appearance Commission. Yeah. Pardon me, council, we have a very special guest on the diocese with us tonight. He is representative of the Fayetteville County Youth Council. I'd like to welcome Mr. James Jensen. I think he's related to someone we know up here. Mr. Jensen, welcome, sir. For those that don't know, the inside joke, that's Councilmember Jensen's son. He's going to put you on the spot.
Pine Forest High School.
Pine Forest High School. Welcome, sir. Thank you for what you do. Keep Ted in line. All right, item 7.01, annual report. Welcome, sir.
How you doing? I'm Johnny Lanthorne from the Joint Appearance Commission, and I just want to give you guys a summary of kind of what we did over the past year. We met a total of 12 times, 10 regular meetings, two special meetings. We heard some reports and activities from Spring Lake Commission. The Carbon Bank Project, we heard on it. We reviewed some plans of the terminal building at the Fayetteville Regional Airport. And we reviewed some plans at the Liberty Point on Person Street, along with the Tree Board. And we had talked about removing some trees as the Tree Board. We looked over the information proposed on the Gateway Corridor overlay district, received some information on the proposed city sign code, and I think we've already passed that. One great thing we did, we partnered with Cumberland County Schools with the Arbor Day Ceremony at Sherwood Park Elementary. And this helps us maintain the Tree City USA designation. And while we're talking about that, we're partnering again this year. The 2017th Arbor Day is going to be held on Friday, March 17th, and it's going to be at JW Coon Elementary. We're going to plant probably three trees there this year. We received some information on the grant application for Phase III of the city's Tree City Inventory. And we heard some different reports from DOT talking about maintaining the riteaways mowing mostly. And our awards, community awards program. That was held in August 1st and it's held at Highland Country Club. And we're on track now to have our ninth annual. The awards program nominations period begins on the 1st of April. And the ceremony, the ceremony will be held at the end of the summer for that as well. And that's just a tidbit of what we've done for the year. You can see a graph on the back of your packet, kind of what we did as far as the program.
Mr. Lanthorne, thank you for that. See a question, Councilmember Hearst?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, Colvin. Johnny, thank you for your leadership and appreciate your report. I was serving on the Appearance Commission, the Fayetteville Appearance Commission in '03 and '04 when we were forming the Joint Appearance Commission. I thought that was an important move for the city and the county. I think you, last year, maybe a year and a half ago, you had reiterated the fact that you're still missing Falcon, Godwin, and Stedman as far as seats on the Joint Appearance Commission. Any efforts to get them on board?
We send a package out every month to each of the mayors, and we still haven't had any participation from either of those towns.
Any assistance from the county on getting appointments from those municipalities?
No, but I probably can lean on them a little bit and see if that could help.
All right. So Spring Lake has their own Appearance Commission, yet they still have a member on the joint. Okay. I encourage you to get that appearance survey online. I think y'all had talked about that.
We have.
A year ago, and now it's come up again. I'd encourage y'all to get that. Then the litter sweep project in Spring Lake. Of course, Fayetteville Beautiful is April 1st of this year. What about the county? Are they, I know they came to Fayetteville Beautiful four years ago and wanted to come up with a county program as well. Is there any discussion about that in your joint meetings?
There's nothing that I've heard of.
Because I get a lot of emails and in fact calls and Facebook notes from people saying, "Hey, Fayetteville Beautiful, can you come out here?" And it's Camden Road way out there in the county. And they've taken me pictures and videos of the litter that's all around outside the city. So I'd encourage y'all to kind of address that as well. Thank you. On the joint meetings that y'all seek to have with boards and commissions, has David Nash, I would think that he could probably arrange that pretty quickly.
We've had some good ones this past year.
Oh, you have?
Yes, sir.
What are some of them? I know you came to the Gateway.
The Gateway and Historic Resources Commission. Met with those folks.
Okay, because I feel like sitting in or either participating or having some input at the zoning and planning would be valuable. And congratulations again on the excellent work that y'all do with the Appearance Awards Program. I mean, the more we encourage our citizens to improve their properties, business and residence, that moves us forward. So I encourage you to get that survey done and to talk to the county about cleaning up the county.
I will.
And thank you very much, Johnny.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lanthorne. Good to see you again. Any further questions, council? Thank you, sir. Item 8.0 is the public forum. Ladies and gentlemen, this is the time that any Fayetteville city resident may have input and a voice in what goes on in their city. Due to policy restrictions, the forum will not last longer than 30 minutes. And each speaker will be limited to only three minutes to address the City Council on issues related to the city of Fayetteville. Individuals wishing to speak at tonight's public forum should have signed up with the city clerk prior to the start of tonight's meeting. If you are here to speak on items that may be on tonight's agenda under the public hearing, we ask that you reserve your comments until the public hearing. So when your name is called by the city clerk, we ask that you would come to the podium, clearly state your name and your home address for the record. Then when you see the light located on the podium change from green to yellow, you have 30 seconds. When you see the red light come on, your time has expired. Again, due to policy restrictions, we are not able to extend the given time. With that being said, Madam Clerk, if you would call the first speaker.
Mayor Pro Tem, we have six speakers this evening. Our first speaker is Mr. John Autry.
Yes, my name is John Autry. This is Allison Boni. We're residents of 1813 Finnegan Street. And I'm disappointed the mayor's not here. I hope he can hear me well on the phone. The reason we're coming here is our stormwater problem, okay? She purchased, she, I'll give you a little background. She taught school here in the city. She taught at Taylor Sanford High School. She taught to special needs children. She taught to special needs children. And she purchased her home in 2001. Two months later, the yard completely flooded, okay? And at that time, she started out dealing with Mr. Pitts, former council members, Greg Kason, who was the storm drain person at that time, and this issue's been going on since 2001. I want everybody to know this is a stormwater problem, not a Matthew problem, okay? Twice a year, this yard floods. Mr. Hearst happens to be my representative. Every time it rains, the man calls me or comes by because he realizes the flood problem we had. We sit on Finnegan Street on a corner. The water travels of a mile of city street. Comes down, comes down, flows down, and all comes to one drain. And when that drain is unable to take any more of that water away, it puts thousands of gallons of water into the yard, thousands of gallons, okay? This is an issue that's been going on for 16 years that we're trying to deal with. The current mayor, very disappointed, she contacted the mayor on the phone, asked the mayor, says, what can you do? What can you do? He said, why don't you sell the house? Now, who in the world's going to buy a house that floods?
I did because it was not divulged to me, but I would never want to do that to another person.
Now, what am I going to do? Pass it on to somebody else? You can't do that anyway. City still had the same problem. Still have an individual standing up here telling you what I got now. The next thing to the mayor, the mayor says, well, you're responsible for your own property. Yes, absolutely responsible for my own property, but I'm not responsible for the water off the city streets flooding me, okay? My yard withstands the water that comes. It can't withstand the city's water and everybody else's.
And we have all the receipts from the, where we have been managing our own property, the thousands and thousands that we've spent.
Then the response from the mayor was, there's nothing I can do for you. Nothing, okay? Then you could at least gave a political answer, said, we'll look into it.
Hurry up.
Okay, okay. So the mayor then actually says, can't do nothing for you, goodbye, hangs on the phone while she's still talking. Very disappointed. Hope you hear that, Mr. Mayor. Now, here we are, we've got a newspaper article here. We're in this article, helplessness. This is what you feel when you see the water rising in your yard, when it's lapping over the front porch, when you've got all this water coming in. We're not in the five-year plan.
We were told that by, is it Rob Stone?
Rob Stone. We're not in the five-year plan, and they already know that the storm situation there, as his comment is, it's just not adequate. Pretty much, this is not going to work. And if it floods, we'd have no ductwork, okay? There's no ductwork at all underneath my house, and what I do have is full of water.
It took out the heating and air unit again, and we just can't keep going. We are stressed to the max. Every time it rains, I get heart palpitations, anxiety. I've been to the hospital. We need help. It's not a Matthew problem. It is a stormwater. Every time it rains, a hard rain. And thank you, Bobby, for looking out for us.
Thank you, Mr. and Mrs. Autry. Was there, no, Mr. McDougal, did you have?
I was trying to get the name on the street. I couldn't.
It was 1813 Finnegan, F-I-N-N-E-G-A-N, is that right, Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, next speaker.
Our next speaker is Mr. Steve Harper.
My name is Steve Harper, 5707 Bassford Court, Fayetteville, North Carolina. I really hate to speak now after hearing them, but my problem's about the stormwater drain, which I appeared before y'all in May of last year, and I'll tell you about the problem about when it rained hard, the street flooded. I told you about the problem when a soldier came through and had a baby in the car, and the car flooded. And the city did come out, it did some work after that, you know, I met with y'all, they came out and did a little work. But the problem was that they said that they would do a study because I think the pipes is too small. I talked to Bryant Reed, he put in getting back with me on that. But when they came out and unstopped the drain, right before that big rain came, it did help, because I've been standing there ever since 1990. And when the hurricane came, I know everybody had problems. I mean, the city couldn't handle everything, I understand that. But my concern is, talking to the workers when they came out, they said the creek, cars and more drive, I stay on Bassford Court, which is a code site, and cars and more drive the street right in front of me, every house during the hurricane flooded, I mean, every house, everybody had to move out. My house was on, my house was on a hill like, and I was on the house, I got a little damage in the crawl space, that was it, I was blessed. And to see those people houses, I mean, everybody had to leave. They's coming back in now, and but that creek, the pipes in that creek need to be cleaned out and stuff like that. I hope the city don't forget about that. And also, the house on the right of me, which was devastated, it was a rental house, a military officer stayed there, she was out, she was overseas, so they had to call her back home. She lost, she had bought brand-new everything in the house. She lost everything, so she finally, she just lost everything. But the owner, two trees fell facing the street. One was in the street, so I called a code enforcement officer. He said, all that he could do was put a note on the door and try to contact the owner where. And but I said, well, when I drive out to the street, I have to pull out in front of the street to see if the car's coming or not. So finally, awkward water, one of the tree was laying on their water meter and on their line, so they came out and trimmed it. But the trees has been laying there ever since the storm, and the debris that was washed up on the fence is still out there. And I know y'all gave the people time enough to clean up, you know, y'all extended that, and I understand that because it was devastating, you know, and I'm not complaining, but I just wanted to let y'all know that please do not forget about these situations, about that creek and whatever, because when you see people, my neighbor in front of me, seven years old, retired from military, they lost everything, they finally getting back in their house. But let's, I know we've got a lot of things on our plates in the city, Ball Park, but I appreciate it and I hope I can get, Mr. Wright, use my councilman, I tried to contact him.
I was going to ask you, give me your name and address once again.
Well, this is my third time giving it to you. Steve Harper.
Good for you.
5707 Bassford Court, Fayetteville, North Carolina.
You want to spell that street name for us, please?
B-A-S-H-F-O-R-D Court.
Ford, okay.
Thank you, and I appreciate it. I'm not trying to throw off anybody, make anybody look bad, not even you, Mr. Wright.
That's fine.
Thank you, Mr. Harper. Madam Clerk, the next speaker.
Our next speaker is Mr. Jerry Rinal.
Mr. Mayor Protem, distinguished members of the Fayetteville City Council, good evening. My name is Jerry Rinal, 516 Deer Path Drive, Fayetteville, North Carolina. I come before you to discuss my concerns with the possible annexation of Shaw Heights into the city of Fayetteville. A decade after the Big Bang annexation, the city has failed to deliver the goods to West Fayetteville. Many of the Big Bang residents will never live to see PWC sewer and water services to their homes. Yet their contribution to the Fayetteville tax rules began when the Welcome to Fayetteville signs were erected over a decade ago. I'm not only concerned about the cost of such a project to the current citizens of Fayetteville in the form of higher taxes and reduced services, but you must also consider the quality of life expectations of our neighbors in Shaw Heights. Some of the Unified Development Ordinance draconian provisions may negatively impact them. Individuals may find themselves homeless after a city code enforcement staff sweeps in declaring some mobile and traditional homes unfit for habitation. They may not want to join the rest of the Fayetteville property owners with their higher combined city and county property taxes. This is also about the quality of life impact of those in West Fayetteville who are still waiting to turn on PWC water and flush their toilets, sending the discharge into the PWC sewers and not into their failing septic systems. Some may not believe the city is capable of simultaneously managing multiple annexations and other capital investment programs. Before any annexation consideration, the citizens of Fayetteville and Shaw Heights must review a detailed project plan and have opportunities to discuss their concerns during public meetings. Big Bang was a big flop, and our neighbors in Shaw Heights need to know what is in store for them as new Fayetteville residents. Recommend that any legislative action should be deferred until after the citizens and taxpayers have seen and approved a detailed annexation plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rinal. Madam Clerk, the next speaker.
Our next speaker, sir, is Mr. Charles Matthews.
Mr. Matthews, good to see you again.
Good to see you. Good to see all of you, especially after that football war, you know? Atlanta really did it. Thank you. To the Honorable Mayor Protem and the rest of the city council, I'm Charles Matthews, 3618 Tinnell Court, Fayetteville, North Carolina. I just want to thank the, I would like to thank the city manager Doug Hewitt and the city attorney, Ms. Karen McDonald, director of engineering, Rob Stone, and the Parks and Recreation Director, Maka Gibson, for going on a road trip with me. We had a good outing, very good outing. We talked about the flooding problems and looked at some of the problem areas. We also shared some possible solution to the flooding of the Big Cross Creek, and we also, I'm glad to have some more people with me that live in the vicinity of the Big Cross Creek came in tonight. And I also went, I also went and, on the road trip with the county commission, they were on the same road trip. I had the county commission, I had not all the county commission, I just had the county manager and the assistant to her, and also the county director of engineers. One might ask, why did I get the county involved? My answer would be, they have a problem with the flooding of the city library. The flooding of Big Cross Creek might not be the county's responsibility, but they do want to know the solution to the flooding of the library. And I want to thank you again for going on the road trip with me, and I want to thank you for listening to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews. Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir. Our next speaker is Ms. Tisha Waddell.
Good evening. I am Tisha Waddell of 1119 Landale Road here in Fayetteville. And first of all, hello to the honorable mayor who is absent tonight, but in his absence, we thank you, Mayor Protem, for taking the time to hear us, and distinguished members of the city council. The city of Fayetteville owns 131.56 acres more or less easement, water and sewer, having all rights and privileges necessary or convenient for full enjoyment or use of this easement in, on, under, over, through, and across this land. This tract of land is on the west side of Rose Hill Road. Above, the above land is a 20-foot wide strip of land used as a utility easement behind the properties on the east side of Rose Lake. On this 20-foot wide strip, we can't build or fence off. If so, the city has the authority to have it removed. The city has stormwater drainage easements between some of the lots on Rose Lake. There are 20-foot wide easements for full service, stormwater runoff, enjoyment, and access for others to get to the lake on the following properties, and those are listed on the paperwork you have. The city also owns 20 acres more or less next to the Riddles property on the west side of Rose Lake. We request that the city cut and clean their easement around Rose Lake. In addition, we request that you have PWC repair or replace sewer lines that run across a corner on Rose Lake. We also request that PWC cut and clean all their easements around Rose Lake. We also request, we are requesting that PWC rebuild the dam on Rose Lake that was breached. The rebuilding of the dam will stop the free flow of water into Big Cross Creek and some of the flooding in lower-lying areas in the city of Fayetteville. Rose Lake will then become a reservoir again that will hold approximately 156 million gallons of water. I also want to thank you guys for the time that you spent walking around with us. We were very, very appreciative of the fact that you took time out of your schedule. We did reach out to Rob Stone via email per your suggestion. I am waiting on his return call or email. We do recognize that in order for the city of Fayetteville to prioritize this project, the rebuilding of the dam, we do need to demonstrate that this project would in fact alleviate the flooding issue that we're seeing downtown, for example, at the library. We know that the storm that we had was a rare occurrence and that we shouldn't see something like that regularly. However, we also know that that area where there's the bridge going down Ramsey Street, crossing into downtown floods regularly. We also know that there's property when you're coming down, it's Sky Bowl Road, but before you get to Sky Bowl, when you're coming down, there's some land that sits off on the right-hand side. If you're heading toward the mall, it looks very swampy. It wouldn't be. It would probably be viable land to put a business or some other commercial activity in that area if we were able to reestablish that lake. So we are asking that you take this seriously and that you would assist us in our efforts to do that research and find out. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Waddell, and you are the president of the Hill and Dell West.
I am, Community Association. Thanks for coming out. We appreciate it.
Thank you for having me. Madam Clerk.
Mayor Protem, our final speaker this evening is Mr. Robert Van Goens.
Before we do that, Mr. Manager, can, this is in my district over there, can we have someone from the property department deal with the maintenance of those easements as far as the grass cutting? I mean, we need to show a good example of taking care of our stuff. So, thank you.
Mr. Mayor Protem, I'm going to forward it to the chairwoman of PWC and Mr. Trago as the liaison for them to look at the sewer lines and easements.
I'll do that. You can serve good, but I'll talk to them. Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Waddell and others, y'all make sure that you see somebody from the city and Mr. Dwight from PWC. Okay, thank you. All right, Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir. Mr. Robert Van Goens.
Thank you. Good evening. Robert Van Gheens, 411 Forest Lake Road. In my official capacity as the president and CEO of Your Economic Development Corporation, it's been a pleasure meeting each of you, getting to know Mr. Hewitt and his team, but tonight, I'm here on a personal matter, and I just wanted to say thank you to this community for the warm welcome that my family and I have received since our arrival, and we've received that at every turn, in every corner that we've visited. On behalf of my wife and my two little girls, who can't wait to join me here, especially after getting to enjoy the weekend that was so beautiful in Fayetteville, we think this is a great place for a young family. We've enjoyed exploring your downtown, attending events, playing in your parks, and we're just really excited to be here. We think this is a city of great potential, and we're proud to be calling Fayetteville our home. I just want to say again how grateful we are for this opportunity and how pleased we are to be some of your newer residents, and I can say that on behalf of 100% of the Van Gheenses that live in North Carolina. So, thank you very much.
Good to see you again. Counselor Member Divya.
And Robert, that's "our" not "your" anymore. It's "our" now, you're here.
Mayor Protem, we have no further speakers.
Going to use this as an opportunity to close the public forum. And counsel, moving on to item 9.01, discussion of the stadium construction manager at risk, and I think there was some modification as to how this item was presented. Mr. Manager.
Yes, sir. We have a, can do a brief presentation if you'd like, or tell us how you'd like to proceed.
Well, from my understanding, and counsel, please weigh in on this, I was thinking that maybe you can explain the scope of what we're authorizing you to do, which is to enter into discussions, but I think there'll be a more detailed conversation of counsel and the public before any contracts are executed, correct?
Again, Mayor, Mayor Protem and members of council, let's see if I can find it here. 9.01 is the Stadium Construction Manager at Risk Contract Award and Adoption of Capital Project Ordnance Amendment 2017-28. Just to give you kind of a brief overview of where we've been and where we're going. As you recall, on October 24th, the council awarded a design contract for the baseball stadium to Populous. The council also authorized an operating agreement on December 13th with the Houston Astros, which set in motion the need for us to move forward with not only the design but also but also the construction of a new minor league baseball stadium across the street. Part of that is the award of the Construction Manager at Risk contract that you're being asked to consider tonight. The Construction Manager at Risk is a legislatively adopted construction method that we believe allows us to have the greatest flexibility, but also cost containment in delivering a project such as a baseball stadium on time and on budget as well. And we believe that this is the preferred method for us to do that under the authority that we have here in the state. And so, we issued an RFP on January third, where there's only one response. We also issued a follow-up RFQ on January twenty-sixth, for which there were four responses, which were received. What's in front of you is kind of a project timeline, and I will spend as much time as the Council would like kind of walking through some of this. The items across the top, the top four boxes, really speak to the work that Populous, along with the city staff and somewhat with the Construction Manager at Risk, will work on. Schematic design, design development, construction development, and bidding and permitting. Where we are, though, is at the bottom of the chart, where we are here at today on the thirteenth of February, asking the Council to affirm a recommendation of the Baseball Committee for a Construction Manager at Risk. Following the Council's discussion tonight, we would begin our negotiations with the firm to do construction manager, and they would partner with both the city staff and the architect to, as the plans are being finalized for the stadium, we would also have our construction manager, a construction firm, right there with us to help with cost containment, but also lending their expertise to value engineer so that we get the best product at the best price and that we're able to, as you see on the purple line, the longest bar here, construction, that we anticipate that starting sometime this summer and then being substantially complete by the end of twenty eighteen, with us being able to play ball in the spring of twenty nineteen. As we've shared before, even under the best of circumstances, we have a very ambitious schedule, but a very doable schedule. And that is why tonight we have before you a very important component, which is the Construction Manager at Risk Award. To get here, all of the responders were invited to interview. Three firms accepted. The selection committee consisted of all four members of the Baseball Committee, as well as myself. The selection committee made a recommendation, and the Baseball Committee voted to recommend to Council the recommendation of the selection committee. And before you is a motion that was slightly... See if I, yeah. Hate to do this on the fly, feel a little bit like Adele at the Grammys now.
Mr. Manager, I'm gonna offer a slightly altered version as well.
Okay, well, I'll leave it alone. I'll get back on key then. And so, the Baseball Committee and the recommendation, as was reported in the paper, was for Barton Mallow. We were really blessed, Council, to have the responses that we did. All of the firms, I think, would be echoed by the members of the Baseball Committee, as well as Councilman McDougal, who was there as well. It was a very long evening, but it was also a very amazing evening as well, listening to all their presentations. And I'm very excited that this is a milestone, another milestone, that we are ready to take as a city and as hopefully as City Council as well. I'm available to answer any questions, or as Mr. Arp indicated, for a motion.
Council, before the motion, are there any questions? Or I guess we can do the discussion when the, any motions, mayor. Mr. Arp.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. And thank you, Mr. Manager, for that overview of the process and the effort. I want to thank also the Baseball Committee. There was a lot of very diligent, due diligence that went into the effort. And I want to thank the staff, and I'd like to also thank the vendors who presented, three very capable vendors. But based on the recommendation from the Baseball Committee, after interviewing the firms who responded to the January twenty-sixth, two thousand and seventeen RFQ, I moved to authorize the City Manager to negotiate a Construction Management at Risk contract with Barton Mallow and adopt the Capital Project Ordinance Amendment twenty seventeen hyphen twenty-eight as presented, and that the Construction Management at Risk contract shall be presented to Council for final approval.
I second it.
We have a motion by Councilmember Arp, a second by Councilmember Wright. Any discussion on the motion? I do have a question, any other discussion on the motion? With none being said, as the Chair of the Baseball Committee, again, I'd like to echo Mr. Arp's sentiments in how diligent and how hard the staff and the committee has worked. We were there to, right at eleven o'clock the other night, interviewing these folks, and they were very capable folks. I think as we agreed, or the committee's recommendation was for Barton Mallow, I want to make it clear and put it on the record that my concern is that there is local and minority participation in this that meets the Council's interests, as well as their policies of doing so on all major projects. And so, I look forward, and I just want to clarify that with the City Manager, that we will review and discuss, and before voting on any execute, the execution of any contracts, and that as you negotiate, that you understand that the Council's interest, from what I've heard, particularly mine, I can speak for myself, is that there be local and as much local and minority participation as we can allow in those negotiations.
Thanks, sir.
Comment.
There are another question, Councilmember Devia.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. I apologize, I was trying to ask it before you spoke. I just had a quick question for either City Manager or the City Attorney. Section six of the amendment authorizes the City Manager, so we are just setting the money aside. You still, this ordinance amendment does not authorize you to spend the money? I'm sorry, say that again?
That's correct.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr., thank you, Mayor Protam.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Wright.
Yes, I just wanted to say, and to echo those concerns of the Mayor Protam, we feel like Barton Mallow would do an outstanding job. But as we also reiterate all the time about local participation and minority participation, and I want to put it on record that I will work to maximize the percentage of minority participation as much as possible in this project, because it's important, local and minority participation for this city is one of the biggest projects that we have had heretofore. So I think it's important that we focus on local. And I just wanted to commend the Committee and the Council going forward on such a great project and a job well done thus far, and also City Manager and the City Attorney. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Wright. Any further discussion on the motion on the floor? If none, Council will ask for your votes.
Green.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Madam Clerk, that's unanimous from those present, as well as the mayor. Thank you, Carolyn. So, next item is the Administrative Report, item ten point zero one, Fiscal Year End, June thirty, two thousand and sixteen, Comprehensive Annual Financial Report Audit Results. Mr. Manager.
Yes, sir. We are, in years past, we have given the audit or presentation to the City Council, but with the Audit Committee we have installed this year, the process was that we would have our Chief Financial Officer here to answer any questions you have. But we did not schedule tonight for a presentation. But if Council would like one, we can definitely provide one at the next meeting. Or we would ask that you would, I guess, accept the report as presented in your agenda package.
Motion to accept the report as presented.
Second. We have a motion by Councilmember Arp, a second by Councilmember McDougal. Any discussion on the motion?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chris.
Just want to clarify that our internal audit committee is looking very carefully at the report of the annual audit. Inclusive of that, will be a meeting very soon to select a new audit company to do our annual audit. This internal audit committee, a local audit committee, is very well-rounded. We have representation from Fayetteville State University, from Fayetteville Technical Community College, as well as Council members on there, and as well as our internal audit team that are very well-versed in what they do. So I don't want anybody to misunderstand how fast we're accepting this audit report here, to think that we're brushing over it because we're into the nitty-gritty on it. There are some findings that have been corrected already, but we're into this, into the details. And I want to make that perfectly clear to our citizens. Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protam.
Thank you, Councilmember Chris. Any further questions or discussion on the motion? We have a motion on the floor. If none, Council will ask for your votes.
Green.
Mr. McDougal and Maule and Chris. Didn't catch, Councilmember Chris, okay. Madam Clerk, that's unanimous from those present, as well as the mayor. Thank you, staff. Council, just before we entertain a motion to adjourn, I'd like to remind all the gentlemen in the audience that tomorrow's Valentine's Day, if you haven't made preparations, you better. And ladies, we want gifts too, ladies. Just a formality for us guys. Okay. All right, Council, with that, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Second.